Hello. That's okay. I am Enid Weix Obama, member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience, those viewing at a later date time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners in tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for your help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates and the necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization, organized at the local, state, and national level, to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Rochester, or any partner or sponsor of this forum. And the sponsor of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from the League of Women Voters, the Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and members of the public. If you would like to submit questions for a future forum, visit our Facebook page, @LeagueOfWomenVotersRochester Minnesota, for information. These questions must be submitted at least 48 hours in advance of one of our forums. As there's never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for office, for offering to serve your community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that serving and running demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum. Tonight's forum is featuring candidates for the Rochester City Council in Ward 2. Candidates for this seat are Mark Bransford, Denise Welty, and Michael Wojcicki. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by the League of Women Voters Rochester, this evening partners, and by the public which were submitted in advance. Candidates will have one minute each to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I'd like to suggest that candidates make your answers as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire minute to give your answer, but please finish your sentence if your time happens to be up. We would like to cover as many questions as possible. The timekeeper tonight is League of Women Voters Rochester member Chris Paweck. Questions from the public were checked to ensure they follow the guidelines for the League of Women Voters Rochester, and members Maggie Brima John, Jane Callahan, and Kathy Swessel reviewed those questions. Asking questions will be Randy Peters from the Post Bulletin and Sam Gill from the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce. Candidate Mark, sorry, candidate Michael Wojcicki will begin with his opening statement.
Hi, everyone. My name's Michael Wojcicki. I'm a member of the Rochester City Council and a longtime member of the League of Women Voters. I very much appreciate these forums as an opportunity to inform the public, and I always appreciate at the beginning of each one when they say that the candidates don't have to use their entire time, because I want to commend you on your optimism. I think we all know how this ends. The values that I believe in are hard work, dedication, responsiveness, being there for the community, but also knowledge and education, making sure that we do our best to educate ourselves so we can make informed decisions, and rely on the expertise of others around us to help better inform the decisions that we make. Compassion is critically important. Sometimes people are reaching out to you because they don't necessarily know where else to go, and that's a responsibility that I take very seriously. But there's perhaps no trait that I wish to expose more than honesty. I will give you honest answers here, I will give you honest answers tomorrow, and I'll tell everybody the same thing. It's just something that I believe in. I'd rather be honest than necessarily try to make everyone happy. I do this because I love the people of Rochester. We all know that we lost civil rights icon John Lewis last week, but we also lost a neighborhood icon here in Rochester, Dr. Colonel Glenn Faith, who was a longtime advocate for the Cudskie Park Neighborhood Association. To say that he was a character would be undercutting him a little bit, but he was a very interesting person, and he believed greatly in his community. He was at every neighborhood meeting. He actually bought properties and helped bring them back in Cudskie Park. He was investing in that neighborhood when no one else would. As he was beginning to lose his life, the last few meetings that I was able to attend, because he was a regular attendee of the neighborhood meetings there till the very end, I had the honor of walking him back to his home, because we weren't sure he had the strength to make it on his own. People who love the community that much, people who give selflessly, those are the people that I serve, not the special interests of the community. Thank you.
And candidate Bransford, please.
Hi, my name is Mark Bransford, and I am a 51-year-old husband and father of four. I've called Rochester home for the last 20 years, and I'd like to thank everyone for inviting me so that I could answer your questions about my candidacy. Someone asked me, what's the elevator speech for why you're running? The simple answer is that I love people, and I want to help and serve people. I want to work for the people of Rochester. I embrace all sides, all walks of life. I'm running because I listen, and that is in short supply. The best example I can give you is, my wife is a fan of a fabric store downtown, and I know with all the construction and COVID, it's been difficult for business owners downtown. So I took the time and I went downtown, and I asked her, how's it going? And she nearly broke down and cried. It was very difficult for her during COVID, and then with all the construction, people couldn't get to her store. And then she told me that I was the first person, ever, ever, who had any interest in city government or business downtown to come and ask her how it was going. I was floored by that. A council member's main responsibility is to their constituents, because that is the best way to lead the city to a brighter future. What's best for the citizens of Rochester is what's best for the city, and not necessarily the reverse. I hope that I will touch your life in a meaningful, dignified, and compassionate way, and when I'm done serving, that I will have left Rochester a better place than when I started. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here this evening. I'm really excited to be part of this event tonight. I'm Denise Welty. I've been married for 40 years. I was recently asked by an old schoolmate if I was married to the same person, and I said, yes, I am. So anyway, yeah, kind of fun. But I have six grandchildren and two beautiful daughters, and I grew up in the third generation here in Minnesota, in Rochester particularly. I have moved around a little bit, but the love of my family and the city brought me back. And seeing the differences between Rochester and living in a larger metropolitan area was a huge factor for me. I knew this was a city I needed to return to, and have my children finish school here. So I'm really excited to be running for city council. It's been a passion of mine for a while, and I finally took the leap to do it, being pushed and coached by family and friends and neighbors saying, you know what, it's your turn, go for it. I've ran a lot of campaigns, never my own, so this is very interesting. But I'm very excited to be here tonight and looking forward to serving the community that I love passionately. And I've always put children and education first, and that's another big passion of mine. Thank you.
We will now hear questions for the, offer questions for the candidates. Our first question is provided by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We're going to go in this order. Candidate Welty will be first, candidate Wojcicki will be second, and candidate Bransford will be third. The question from the league, affordable workforce housing and unsheltered homeless residents have been issues for several years. What is the city's responsibility and what do you propose to do?
Right, and that's also, you know, a passion of mine, is I've worked in soup kitchens and helped serve Saturday meals to some of the more needy and perhaps the homeless folks of our community. I'm very passionate about that, and I think we really have to explore a lot of different avenues for them, and I think the role of the city is to make sure that we are meeting their needs in whatever that takes, you know, to get there. But I'm thinking that, you know, one way to provide affordable housing really would be repurposing buildings that are maybe vacant or left open, that we could use either temporarily shelters or build permanent shelters. We have a lot of land use around the city that we could utilize as well, maybe auction off to builders that could build affordable housing, smaller homes, that could be used to, you know, for the advantage of the people that are homeless in our city. So, thank you.
It's important that the city of Rochester partners with a lot of public and private entities, because nobody's going to solve this issue on their own, and nobody around the country is really solved. They're really the lead agency when it comes to housing in this area, is the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and they need to be doing a little bit more to take a lead in this. But we as a city have a role to play, and we've actually been pretty active in making some improvements. First and foremost, we've created some new zoning districts called Transit-Oriented Zoning and R2X, which is going to strategically allow for higher densities in appropriate places. We can't have low density forever and expect to ever have affordable housing, so we have to take places like major transit ways and make sure we have more people living along there. It's not just the cost of housing, it's the cost of energy, it's the cost of transportation. These all matter, and if we can keep the cost of energy, transportation, and housing to less than 50%, we can actually do a lot of really creative projects in this community that serve most of it. We also need to maintain our existing stock, and part of that is building new stock. So these are all things that we are actively doing, and we continue to be a good partner. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Bransford.
Affordable housing, this is a topic we've heard a lot about over and over again, and yet what we have right now is a hyper-focus of luxury, high-density rentals downtown that the city council time and again votes for. We have some of the most expensive permits in the city and the state for building homes, red tape, long wait times for permits, vastly increased sewer and water fees, which always get passed on to renters and homeowners. So we really need to think about housing across the city, not just high-density downtown. We need it, yes, but we need housing of all types, single-family homes, rentals, ownership options within these high-density units. Because without housing of all types, we're just going to have rentals that have attracted transient population, not homeownership that attracts a population that wants to live here.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Post Bulletin. Mr. Bransford will begin, candidate Bransford will begin, followed by, and then candidate Wojcicki.
Yes, do you support the use of a utility or service fee as a way to reduce the city's reliance on property tax revenue?
This city has way too many fees. Property taxes have been going up, fees have been going up. We need to cut our spending. We need to, right now, at the end of this COVID, the business is hurting, no, we don't need any more fees, we don't need any more property taxes, we need to flatline both. Fees for things like streetlights or sidewalks are just stealth tax, because we've overspent, we've spent frivolously, and we're spending more than we're taking in. We need to cut, and we need to cut now. We need to start thinking about the future and helping small business owners. We need to look through the lens of the community. The community doesn't need to pay any more taxes or fees.
Thank you. Candidate Welty.
Could you please repeat the question one more time?
Sure. Do you support the use of a utility or service fee as a way to reduce the city's reliance on property tax revenue?
You know, right now, I'd answer, I do not support that, no. I think the times that we're in, and uncertainty of our future, and the workers in this city, and the fees and taxes that we're already paying, and seeing increases too, I would not agree with that, probably not this year, and probably not in '21 anyway, to start with. I think right now we have other options, and we have to prioritize what's important as we move forward out of this pandemic. That's huge. We have people unemployed. Thank you.
I absolutely support relying on more fees. What happens in local governments is you're very fixated on property taxes, and not everyone pays property taxes. They disproportionately have small businesses and homeowners. That's not a good thing for our community. So if you say you really care about small businesses, we need to diversify away from property taxes. I'm not talking about taking in more revenue through these different fees, I'm talking about reducing property taxes and putting these fees in their place. It's far more equitable, smarter, and it's going to help us in the long run.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Chamber of Commerce, and candidate Wojcicki, I'm going to ask you, go right back up. That will be the process, that if you were the third, you'll be first on the next question going forward. I'll see you in a minute.
Ready. Perfect. Last night, the city council voted to approve the CARES Act funding recommendation. Do you think these measures will be sufficient, and what other actions might be needed to support small business recovery, especially hospitality in our community?
No, these actions will not nearly be sufficient. This is one of many tools that we have to use, and not everybody's necessarily going to recover from this. There's a reason why so many leaders have gone so far to prevent pandemics. Once you have a pandemic, it's really hard, and I wish we had better leadership at the federal level, but clearly we don't. What we're going to do here is, the county got an even larger allocation of CARES Act funding than the city, and I think it's important to see what they prioritize. We prioritize small business, direct help to people, and some basic government operations, but we're going to have to work with them and make sure that we equitably distribute these funds and try and fill in gaps that the other ones might have. I think hands down the most important thing we have to look at is preventing evictions when the current moratorium ends, because we're going to have a tidal wave of homeless if we don't address that. That has to be the number one, and then certainly some of our local economic things are important as well. This is one of many tools that will be necessary to recover from a pandemic that we shouldn't be facing.
Thank you. Candidate Bransford.
I'm glad, four months into a pandemic, we now have some funding for small businesses. Small businesses downtown are really in trouble, and this is a good first step, but we, on the heels of a pandemic, decided to go ahead and start having construction downtown that further cratered their ability. So this is the least we can do, is give the small businesses a leg up and help them get back on their feet.
Thank you. And candidate Welty.
Sure, so I'm really excited about the CARES Act and the money being put towards small businesses. I'm a small business owner myself. I teach CPR, first aid, instructor, and I have not taught since March. So there's a lot of us that won't see any of that, but because I am one person now, I don't have a trainer or assistant anymore. So it's important, it's a start. I hope that there's more that comes down the pole, down the ropes for us, because there's a lot of small businesses that are not going to be able to maintain, you know, keeping their doors open. I know several right now, because I have a lot of friends in the businesses, that are struggling, and it's worrisome. So, you know, it's a good start, and we'll see what happens next. Thank you.
All right. And candidate Welty, you can stay there.
Yay.
Yay. This question from the community now, this is regarding DMC. Do you feel the Destination Medical Center project is on schedule? Is it meeting the objectives set out for the project?
That's a good question. So for those of us that have lived in Rochester their whole lives, sometimes it feels like DMC is kind of squeezing us out, you know, in a way where we feel, you know, there's just so much happening and changes to our city. Are they on a good timely thing? I believe they are. I, you know, I don't know how to properly answer that, but I'm just hoping they keep in mind when they're doing all the building that there are barriers for the community, the folks that live around the city, and myself, and that we see some good things come out of it in transportation in and out of the city, but I believe they are. I think, you know, they're on track, and they're doing so far what they said they'd be doing, so.
Thank you. Candidate Wojcicki.
Well, in The Simpsons, Homer Simpson says that he makes a toast to alcohol, the cause of and solution to all of life's problems, and that's actually kind of the way Rochester's viewed DMC, and the reality is it's not the cause of or the solution to all of Rochester's problems. It's a very specific economic development engine, and there's actually metrics that are set out in the state law that have to be reported, and basically by every single metric, DMC is outperforming where they were supposed to be at this point. So the answer to that is a clear yes. We're doing things, the first phase is not necessarily fun, and DMC isn't going to be popular. All that construction that people are complaining about downtown, it's not fun. We've actually accelerated some of it to take advantage of the fact that things are slower downtown this year, but putting in sewer pipes isn't fun, and it's really expensive, and it's going to shut down roads for a while, but it does have to happen, and I'm glad we're getting a lot of this done on the front end. I think there's some better things to come.
Thank you. Candidate Bransford.
I think DMC started off with a lot of hope and promise, and there was a lot of enthusiasm about DMC. But as time has gone by, I believe that the original mission of simply improving downtown's infrastructure for things like Discovery Square got a little off-track when the mission creep into housing. Their original mission was to just improve the city center, and as time has gone by, I think that there has been a little bit of an expansion in their mission into housing, which shouldn't occur. Is it on schedule? No, I don't think it is. I talked to Lisa Clark, and she said, well, there was a lot of complaining that things were slow, and now that things are going quickly, there's a lot of complaining as well. But I believe that DMC needs to go back to their original mission statement. The other thing too is, now at the heels of a pandemic, things are really changing. People are not going to be working downtown like they were before, and so I think we need to go back and reevaluate how we're doing development downtown.
Thank you. And Mr. Bransford, you can stay there, candidate Bransford. Our next question involves the subject of law enforcement. What steps will you take to ensure there is accountability within the Rochester Police Department and improve the relationship the RPD has with the Rochester community?
I had the privilege of speaking to the Rochester Police Chief, and he is following Barack Obama's guidelines, the 21st century guidelines to policing, and to good effect. One of the ways that we can help improve relationships with the community is having a more diverse police force. He has changed hiring practices that have increased the diversity by looking at personality traits for compassion, integrity, because as he told me, you can train an officer to be proficient, but you can't train an officer to have integrity and compassion. They're also doing things like nights out, where they're trying to have positive interactions between the police and the community, because as we all know, if we get stopped and have a speeding ticket, that's not a positive experience. So they're trying to reach out and engage the community in a very positive way, and I think that needs to be continued and encouraged.
Welty.
You know, I think it's all relational as well, and I think that I would really like to see the police out in the community a little more, maybe on foot a little bit, building those relationships in neighborhoods. I recently, when I was working in the inner city of Baltimore, you would literally see a police officer stopped eating his lunch with a group of kids, or playing, shooting hoops, you know, in the park with the kids, and it's got to be relational. We've got to build that trust back up, not just here but everywhere. So I think, again, it's all relational, it's all how we do it, it's all rethinking, it's all retraining, and how do we have the conversations, you know, in our communities that we can work together?
I'm going to go back on the premise of the question a little bit and say that we are blessed in Rochester. We actually have much better relations between our police and our community than others do. I've been at the neighborhood meetings forever, where we typically have police come there and just answer questions about what's going on with the neighborhood. I've seen really tremendous police work in this community. I've also seen a thing, a few things that kind of embarrassed me. I will say that the mayor takes policing very seriously, and the mayor is the head of the police department, so she is the leader on this, and I provide support for her. Probably the best thing that we can be doing, because these are very trying times, is take a look at what the community is asking for, compare that to our policies, and what's been really exciting about this is time and time again we get these great suggestions, you should be doing this, you should be doing this, and then we evaluate our practices, and that is what we're doing. We've been pioneers in bringing social services into policing, and also we need to make sure we don't over-police. We had a situation where we were going to criminalize just the act of sitting in a skyway, and that's the kind of stuff that we're asking for trouble when we start trying to make every little thing a crime for police to address.
Thank you. And candidate Wojcicki, you can stay right there.
Yes, I am.
The Star Tribune recently reported that Rochester has one of the highest disparities between black and white poverty rates. What policies could be used to address this disparity?
This is another one of those that goes far beyond what the city as an individual can do, and it certainly starts with the schools, and we've seen a lot of unfortunate racial outcomes with our schools, not the least of which was the consideration of a southwest school site that the data showed very clearly, created an ultra-white, highly wealthy school in the southwest, and a majority-minority poor school in the southeast. Those are the kind of decisions as community leaders we have to work on and realize, look at our policies and our decisions through an equity lens, because something like that would have had terrible far-reaching consequences in terms of the outcomes of those populations. So if we're not looking at every policy through an equity lens, we're not doing our jobs.
Thank you. Candidate Bransford.
The disparity is partly due to a lack of meaningful work. The Libby's Plant and the other camps and those manufacturing plants closed, and those were over a thousand good, meaningful jobs that no longer exist, and where was the city council to try to keep those jobs? Those are the kind of jobs that people that typically have $50,000 or so a year are good, meaningful jobs. The education. I believe that the city council really went beyond its bounds when they questioned the school district's experts on where to put the school in the southwest. I believe that was wrong.
Thank you. And candidate Welty.
And I am going to have you repeat the question, so I can do the first part again. Thank you.
The Star Tribune recently reported that Rochester has one of the highest disparities between black and white poverty rates. What policies could be used to address this disparity?
Okay, sure. So I don't know if it's really about the policies that we need in place to fill this gap in. I think we really need to go back to some trade schools for folks that maybe don't have the pathway to college. There's union apprenticeship programs that they can get paid on the job to become a plumber or electrician. I think we need to make sure that everybody we need to, to make sure that everybody, regardless of their race or their color, it doesn't matter, but everybody deserves that same opportunity life, and education is the key. And I can't say that, say that enough. Volunteer networks for mentorship for these folks, maybe grants. But I really think, like, the trade schools are a really excellent opportunity for them, where they can get good training on the job, paid, and get pay increases during that time of their apprenticeship. And it puts them in a way better place, and I think it's going to bridge the gap. We lost all of our trade schools and our VOTEC schools, and I think that we need to see them back. Thanks.
Thank you. And candidate Welty, you can stay right there.
I gotta learn that.
Okay, our next question revolves around the environment and energy. Former Mayor Brady signed a proclamation for 100% renewable energy by the year 2030. That's 10 years from now. And last year, the Rochester Public Utilities selected resource plans with the same commitment. How will you ensure that further developments in Rochester, including DMC, follow sustainable building practices and utilize green, uh, green energy?
Right, good question, long question. So I am all about green, green energy. I'm about, if a person could live off the grid, I would choose that for myself. I think that's really important. I, you know, 10 years might be a little bit of a stretch to get us all to where we need to be with that. But as we do, as development happens in our city, I think the pressure should be on the developers, and they should figure out a way of paying for that, and it shouldn't be put back on the taxpayers, per se. So anyway, I am all for green energy. I think it's, it's great. Solar energy is coming down in prices. I think it's, we're going to see a lot more of that. But I think it needs to happen. And yeah, I'm for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Weltek.
I love this question. I love this question. I'm actually also on the Rochester Public Utility Board of Directors. When we decided to close down and end coal burning in the city of Rochester, I got to make that motion. I got to shut down a coal plant. It felt awesome. I also got to make the motion when we looked at the five different options we had for electrical power going forward. We threw out all of them that weren't 100% renewable energy. I'm super excited that we're going down that path. We're going to achieve it. We actually have the plan in place, and we are going to achieve it in 2030 and in May of, in March of 2030. Energy standards continue to go up. We can't go beyond the building code. A lot of the times when you hear complaints about building costs, that's what they're talking about, is they do, we do require better energy-efficient designs. We have projects in this community that have gone above and beyond. The energy savings at the Berkman Project are absolutely amazing. We're looking at a downtown energy loop that can make us one of the most energy-efficient cities in the country. Time after time, we're making energy-improving decisions that not only help energy consumption, but also clean air. And we're in the process right now of going to LED lights throughout the entire of the city, and not the ones that burn out your eyes.
And candidate Bransford, same question.
Green energy, it's, it's great. We definitely need to be conscious of the future and global warming. I, I agree. It's a bit of a stretch to get there in 10 years, and primarily because it's expensive. It adds a lot of expense to building. And right now, in this town, on the heels of COVID, with increased property taxes and fees and whatnot, increased building costs get passed on to the renter and the homeowner. And right now, I think we have to step back a little bit and figure out a way to do it in a way that's a little bit more measured over time.
Question from the community, and then we're going to switch back to one each from the Post Bulletin and, and the Chamber. Good job. Good job, candidate Bransford. The question from the community reads, under the city charter, the council determines their own salaries. Do you believe that an independent panel or different method should be used to decide if pay raises are appropriate?
Yes. That's the short answer. Absolutely. There should be an independent body that determines pay raises. I did not like the process. It was not transparent. And the amount of money that they wrote, 100, 100% increase in salary was ridiculous. Not to mention the fact that there was an article in the Post Bulletin today that said very clearly that the salaries that the city council has here in Rochester for other cities of a commensurate size were equitable. So 100% increase in salary was not appropriate, and an independent council, I believe, would not have approved of such a large inappropriate increase in salary.
I certainly agree to the point where I think a third party would have been great in this, in this position of deciding wages. However, I just want to be really clear. I always, I've always believed that people should be paid for what the work they put in and the hours they put in. However, it was, it did come about kind of quickly, and in a, you know, a little bit more transparency would have been great with the pay raises. So I, I do believe that we need to figure out a new system going forward, and maybe it's in smaller increments, or, you know, most people, you know, get 3% to 5% maybe a year increase in pay. And I think we just have to be more aligned and in tune to that as we work for the city. We are, you know, civil servants, so, thank you.
Repeat the original question, please.
Oh, here. Under the city charter, the council determines their own salaries. Do you believe that an independent panel or different method should be used to decide if pay raises are appropriate?
Yeah. And the answer to that question is yes, I absolutely believe that. In fact, I believe it so much that the council actually passed this several years ago, only to have the mayor and some other council members veto it and sustain that veto. So this is something that we should, should still be doing. Now, we had a huge pay equity issue here, where the council members were not making enough that they could be independent and do this job. It is absolutely a full-time job. So we went out of our way to introduce in the 29, in the 2019 budgeting sessions for 2020, we had several unrequired public hearings and open comment period, and a long process to get it in place. In the meantime, and that raised our salaries up to the whopping total of $39,000 a year. So if you have a problem with council members earning $39,000 a year for what we do for the community, I am not your candidate. Please support one of the other candidates. I want to be very clear. I stand absolutely behind that. If I was really in it for the money, I would quit the city council, go work for the county board, who just simultaneously raised their pay to $55,000 a year in a much less transparent process. This isn't about the money. This is about being independent from some of the people who can really benefit from controlling local government.
Our next question will come from the Post Bulletin, and candidate Weltek will go first.
What are your visions for the future of the Rochester Public Library?
The Rochester Public Library is a pillar of equity in the community. There are few places that are welcoming to the people who really need a place to be welcomed, is the Rochester Public Library. This is a place where the homeless go, because they can go there, and they're welcomed here, and they appreciate it, and they benefit from it. Doesn't matter what walk of life you're from. You can, you can be here homeless, and you can be a physician here doing research as well. It is welcoming to everybody, and the community needs more places where everyone is welcome, irrespective of income. This building was very poorly constructed. It was poorly thought out. A lot of corners were cut. It can't cost-effectively be increased. I believe the future of the library is a new central library that is worthy of the amazing staff of this library, and hopefully partnering with schools to create community schools where we can have branch libraries in the off-school hours as well.
Well, if the library leaves downtown, there goes another historic landmark from downtown, just like the Days Inn and other things. We need to keep some of the character that we have downtown alive. Even if there were some corners cut, we need to keep the library downtown. And if that means spending a little bit of extra money to fixing it up and making it more modern, so be it. We need to keep our character downtown.
Good question. I, you know, I think this is either the third or fourth library that I've seen in my lifetime here, and my favorite was downtown, and I think it might be the Mayo Clinic Library now. Beautiful structure. So I grew up, you know, always having the public library downtown, enjoyed it. I've been able to bring my grandchildren here, love it. You know, I'm not sure, like, I think if, you know, if we had to do something different, I think branches in different parts of the city would, would probably better fit and be, you know, more accessible to everybody. So, you know, that's kind of where I stand. Libraries are great. I've utilized them my entire life, and I'm old-fashioned, so I'm not the one that reads on anything electronically. I like a book in my hand. And I want, I want my children and grandchildren to experience the same thing, so.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Rochester Chamber of Commerce.
I blew it again. Yeah.
All right. So as you're aware, the COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in millions of Americans being furloughed or laid off, including many in our local community. In the face of these historic unemployment numbers, what steps would you take as a member of the Rochester City Council to promote the creation of jobs and help put Rochester citizens back to work?
Yeah, that's a tough question. Nobody here has experienced anything like this in our lifetime. I haven't. I'm probably one of the oldest ones in the room that has never experienced this, and I'm very worried about it. I have family furloughed right now, you know, and, and unemployed. Myself, one of them. So I think that we have to kind of regroup and be very thoughtful in the process as we go forward. And I think we really need to prioritize how we're going to get people back to work. What does that mean? How are we going to keep businesses opening? I'm glad to see that Mayo is finally ramping back up. That's exciting. But we need, you know, to support all the small business owners in this town. And, you know, that's a good question. I don't have all the answers, and I wish I had a magic wand that I could figure it out, because it's affecting a lot of us in this city, and it's worrisome for me. Thank you.
First and foremost, the primary functions of a city government are not necessarily around the areas of, of job creation. That's something that's important for the overall of our community. But the bulk of what we do is delivering core services, and we must continue to deliver those core services. Now, there were some people upset with us that we weren't furloughing our own employees. And the honest answer is, we were able to, with about 4% cuts, be able to adjust to this crisis for this year without having to furlough. And I think that's a good thing, because we shouldn't further contribute to job losses in the community. It's also important that as we go into recovery, we leverage our resources and federal and state resources that are going to be available for recovery, and get a lot of projects going and get a lot of leverage money in there. In particular, one that I think we have an opportunity to look at is the, is a new central library. That is something that I would see as being very exciting. It's important that we get people back to good jobs, not jobs that are poverty-level wages. We need to be thinking about how we can elevate jobs to pay living wages in the city of Rochester. That's going to help us in the long run. There are a lot of businesses looking for workers today, so we don't even know what the real unemployment rate is, but we got to work on that.
Thanks. Let me circle back to the Kemp's and the Libby's manufacturing positions that disappeared. Again, 1,000 jobs, 1,000 meaningful jobs that the city council didn't seem to care to try to fight for. The incumbent said, well, we don't want a Toyota plant in the city, because that's not what we do. But manufacturing jobs are vital to a good, vibrant city. So we need to think outside the box to get manufacturing jobs back here, all kinds of jobs back here. And there are people in this town that are actively looking at ways to attract different kinds of companies to come here. There are many opportunities. We have a lot of Fortune 500 companies up in the cities that we could try to attract and have them come here and build on the community. Thank you.
Thank you. You can stay right there, candidate Bransford. So this question comes from the community again. How do you, how do you plan to decrease the access and use of drugs and alcohol by underage youth? Are there prevention strategies that the city or county could employ?
Well, a lot of it starts with our youth. And we need to educate kids at an early age that drug use shouldn't, should not occur, and that through, and that's also from, it's on, it's on us as parents and families and community members to make sure that they understand the dire consequences of drug use and drug addiction. But we also need really good drug rehab for, a lot of the homeless, for example, are drug addicted. And we need to be able to help them recover so that they could become productive citizens again.
Thank you. Candidate Welty.
You know, that's a scary, scary thought, when you, as parents or grandparents, have to worry about underage drinking and being able to purchase it in establishments, establishments in our county or in our state. I actually was in a bar when they did a sting operation, and they got a pretty hefty fine, because it wasn't the first time. And I think we really have to enforce that. It just has to happen. You're selling to underage folks? It's illegal. And there has to be stiffer penalties. And I think people will take, you know, big notice of that and worry a little bit more about that if they know there's going to be a hefty penalty for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Weltek.
I appreciate that this is being asked at City Forum, because we all have a role to play in this. I think that the county, state, and the school board probably deal with these issues a little bit more. But I think we, as Americans, tend to handle these very poorly. And state to state, we're doing it very inconsistently now. I wish we had more honest conversations with kids about drugs and alcohol. You know, I grew up with the, this is your brain, this is your brain on drugs commercial, which is just a bunch of propaganda. And when you lie to kids about the consequences of drugs and what they're going to do, that's not an honest conversation. A lot of countries, they have honest conversations about what different drugs are, how they'll affect you, you know, and the different dangers, levels of the drugs. The reality is, is honest conversations are going to go a lot further than the abstinence and age-based policies that we're trying to advocate for right now. I believe that kids are inherently pretty smart, and I think that a little bit more honesty in the way we handle these issues and avoiding some of the criminalization is probably a far better way to go.
Next question for you, candidate Weltek, is regarding the budget. For many years, the city's total budget has been growing at a rate exceeding the rate of inflation. Is this a problem? Inflation has been low recently. Would you be more concerned about increasing revenues or decreasing, decreasing spending?
Yeah, it's, it is, it is true that we've been growing faster than CPI, but government CPI is a little bit different figure, because some of the things that we spend a lot on, which tends to be personnel and infrastructure, that inflation rate has actually been quite a bit higher. And not only that, it's not like we're a city that's been stagnant in terms of the amount of growth. So we're actually growing as a city, too. So yeah, every year our budget's probably going to get bigger for the foreseeable future. The comprehensive plan was a huge change to the way we did things in the community. We had thousands of hours of community engagement. We invited everyone from neighborhoods to church groups to the superintendent of schools to come in and help design what our future is going to look like. With this and new sewer plans, while some people don't like the fact that we're ending sprawl in a lot of areas and making a lot more smarter strategic infrastructure decisions, that in the long run is going to allow us to put more money into the things we love, like libraries, parks, and the arts.
So I, I approach this from the community's perspective, in that if we keep our spending the way it is, that's just going to hurt the average person. We need to start cutting our spending, at least for now. We don't need RPU fee increases. We don't need streetlight tax. We don't need some of these things that I would call stealth tax, that help bring in funding to keep that spending at a high level. Right now, we need to cut. We need to cut our budget and do only the most basic things that will keep the city afloat right now, because saving nickels now... afloat right now, because saving nickels now is going to save dollars later. And when you're in government too long, I think you get so city-focused that you lose sight of the community. And we need to have a community-focused look at the budget.
Thank you. Candidate Welty.
Well, I'd really like to take a really good, hard look at the budget and where we're at and why we are spending more, or going up at, like Michael said, we are growing, so that's going to happen. But I have to say, and my family would say that, I'm very frugal, and I'm very accountable, and I'm really good at being a steward for other people's money. And I would prioritize where this, where we're spending at, where can we make cuts, and go from there. Thank you. I stayed, I put, I put gum under my shoe. Just kidding.
Yeah, we don't want that today. How do you plan to involve your constituents to inform your decision-making?
Absolutely, and that's a really, really important piece to any candidacy. I think I have already started reaching out, and I have kind of a committee forming at this point where I go to them for advice and what do they think on certain issues. So I think that's a huge piece, you have to involve them. That's why we're here, we represent them, we represent our ward, not just our ward, but the city, city as a whole. And again, accountability is huge. So I would involve and reach out to small business owners, neighbors, grandparents, the elderly. I think sometimes we forget about the elderly, and they have an important piece in saying this, is I have parents in assisted living that are paying over $14,000 a month for the two of them in the city. That's, it's crazy, like, they need a say in finances as well, and how money is spent, and how they can keep living here in the city as well, so, thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Wojciech.
Well, this is certainly my bread and butter. One thing I've always done since day one, as I've been out there in the community, I respond to every phone call, to every email I tend to your neighborhood meetings, probably more than you do. This is, this is something that's always been critically important to me, and I do it because it's part of, it's the service and learning about the neighborhoods and what the needs of the neighborhood are. But I also see this as a huge reservoir of talent within the community, I learned so many things. I didn't necessarily understand all the issues that were going on at the Rochester Civic Theater and the Rochester Convention and Visitors Bureau. The mismanagement in those places was insane. It was talking to people in the community who taught me about that. When you talk about trying to cut, it's always fun to say that you're going to cut government, but it's not necessarily easy to actually do. We actually did legitimate cuts because of the research we did. We're saving taxpayers $1 million a year at Mayo Civic Center with the changes that we made. And sure, some of the people there, like Joe Powers and Andy Shifolius, who were benefiting before, they're probably not happy now, but you have to be a courageous leader and stand up to these folks.
Thank you. Candidate Bransford.
I actually have been going around to the constituency. Instead of door-knocking, I've been asking people to get groups of people together so that I could meet them and have a COVID-friendly sidewalk talk. And I ask them, you know, what are their concerns? What, what do they feel is the biggest problem in Ward II? I expected to hear about DMC or COVID, but the answer was, no one's listening, responding, but not listening. They don't feel like they have a voice right now. And after, you know, 12 years in office, I suppose, you know, we focus on the city and we don't focus on the constituency. That's why we need fresh blood. And I will be the person who will actually listen and bring together people and include their ideas in my decisions.
Thank you, and you can stay there. I'm going to ask a really quick question, I doubt that it'll take you a whole minute to answer, before we go on to our closing statements. What is your position on requiring the wearing of masks in Rochester?
Masks are very important. We're in the middle of a very, very serious pandemic, and I wear them, I have asthma, and I also wear them out of respect. The mandate, however, I did not like the process of how the mandate went. We got the packet that said how things were going to go the previous week, then on Monday, that language changed, and then boom, the next day, we just put that on the small business owners to try to go figure out how to make it work. I think the small business owners needed more time. Yes, we needed to have a masking, but we needed to give our business owners a little bit more time to catch up and just not say, "Go fish."
Thank you. And candidate Welty? What is your position on requiring wearing face masks in Rochester?
Well, I'm personally okay with it. I too have some health issues that I, you know, need to wear a mask. I have family members as well, I have a father in hospice, and, you know, like I said, elderly parents, and I think it's really important, especially, for goodness sakes, we're Med City, like, we should be leading this. This shouldn't even be a question. And I get, I get, I hear from some of the folks in my ward that they don't like the mandate, but I think this is an easy, easy mandate, an easy thing to do. Put on a mask out of courtesy and respect for other people. We don't know, I mean, we don't judge who's standing next to us, it could be a cancer patient, you just don't know. And I think, we live in the Med City, this is our health, this is our health that we're talking about here. And it's, it's an easy, it's something easy that we can all do. I have no issues with it.
For God's sake, elected officials actually have to make some hard decisions. This was a pretty easy one. I was an obvious yes, I support it, and I do that out of respect for the community. Next question.
Be your closing statement. We'll begin with candidate Wojciech.
Well, do I get to reuse the remainder of my time from the last one?
No, you get two minutes for your closing statement.
That, that's very good. Well, first and foremost, I appreciate the conciseness of this forum, because we were able to get to a lot of questions. Of course, a lot of them were repetitive from other sessions that we've done, but I want to go back to my core values, you know, just being there for the constituency, being responsive, listening to experts. It's easy for me to make a decision on masking, because the experts are pretty rock-solid in terms of what that was done, what was being there. And you know what, sometimes when you listen to folks, you're going to disagree with them, and people disagree with me all the time, and I always tell them, is it, it's totally okay to disagree with me if you don't like my answer, but it is my duty as an elected official to take the time and explain why I believe what I believe and what is informing that decision. And if I can't do that, then I'm failing in my responsibility. And that's the standard that I've always held myself to, is that there's always going to be disagreements, but when you're decisive, you can be a better leader, and when you can explain it well, that's going to better inform and build credibility. I've had a lot of folks that I've disagreed with vehemently over the years, and sometimes things happen where they need somebody, they need a council member. And sometimes I'll get an email or a call late at night and see something that urgent is going on. And what I love about local government is, beyond everything else, these are your neighbors that you're caring for, and when they come to you in their time of need, that gives you a very special responsibility to be able to reach out and be the person and deliver the services that they need. That means you have to be responsive, that means you need to know how to help out or how to get it to the right place. And those are things that don't just come naturally, and they're things that don't necessarily, you have to work on them, time after time after time again. Dr. Colonel Glenn Faith, who I told you about in his later years, would ride Amtrak and do, serve medical communities in rural North Dakota. He would have disagreed with me politically on just about everything, but we became great friends because we both had that same love for the neighborhood, and we shared that, and we worked hard to make each other successful. That's what I want to do for the community.
Thank you. Now for your closing statement, candidate Bransford.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here and answer the questions that you've been given to me. I hope that you can get a sense of the kind of leader that I would be if I were so fortunate as to earn your vote. Good leadership is not taking the name of a pillar in our community like Joe Powers and throwing him under the bus, that's not good leadership. The generous nature of the support I've received is humbling. So many people have reached out, perhaps because I'm not a politician. I'm not seeking this as a career, but a calling to serve you. I listen, I will be your advocate, and I humbly ask for your support by voting for me in the primary on August 11th. It's time for change in Ward II.
Thank you for the opportunity as well, for being able to participate this evening. I'm really excited. You know, I'm speaking from the heart when I say I love this city, I grew up here, my family's still here, we've got five generations going now, and I am very invested in our city, and I want what's best for the people that live here or choose to live here. I want equality for everybody. I deeply care about the children and the folks living in our community. I'm a strong advocate for several things, you know, fairness and education, you know, and all children should have the same start, same good start in life as everyone else. I'm sorry, my alarm's going off. Thank you, Michael. So anyway, I'm just really excited for the opportunity to be here, I'm passionate about our city, I will represent the people well, I will represent Ward II very well, I'm a fair person. And the one thing that comes to mind often with me, that I hear often from other folks, is not only can you be driven to work by yourself, but you're one heck of a team player. And that's what it takes in this city, is cooperation and teamwork. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you all that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Rochester, or any partner or sponsor of this program. Thank you to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is August 11th, and that early voting has started. If you have voted by absentee ballot and would like to change your ballot based on what you've learned tonight, visit mnvotes.org, that's M-N-V-O-T-E-S.org, for more information on that process. Please remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place or would like to see your sample ballot, visit vote411.org, that's vote411.org. At that place, you will also see more information about all of your candidates. To see this forum again, access the forums on the Rochester Public Library website. Good night, everybody.